We'll begin in ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Good morning. The school board meeting for July 11th, 2017 is now in session. We would like to thank all of you who are in attendance with us, in person, or watching the meeting from another location for investing your time and energy to join us, especially during the summer. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us and support of our schools, and we appreciate you being a part of the process. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Mr. Craig.
Present.
Mrs. Deskovich.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
And Mr. Ziegler.
Present.
Please join me for a moment of silence as we mourn the loss of two members of our BPS family. Jay Rodriguez, a senior from Heritage High School, and Sebastian Meacham, a student from Pineapple Cove Classical Academy. Thank you. This morning, I would like to ask Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins, who's joining us this morning in Dr. Blackburn's absence, the opportunity to recognize staff, students, or community members. Mr. Susan?
I wanted to say, I see Colonel McKnight in the stand somewhere. Can you stand up for me? Is he out there? There he is. Ladies and gentlemen, not many of you know, but the story Black Hawk Down, and many of our local patriots and veterans follow this man as a leader, and I just wanted to recognize him inside of our audience. Thank you for being here, sir. Also, I wanted to thank Coastal Mechanical. They took me over there. They actually opened up three apprenticeship schools that are going to be free for kids to dual enroll to on top of learn their different trades as far as plumbers, pipe fitters, and sheet metal cutting. They wanted to work out an articulation agreement with RNOT and do that. Also, the HBCA, which is the Home Builders and Contractors Association, is going to form what's known as the Industry Board, which is going to assist Janice Schultz with the construction industry as far as pulling together all the subs and everybody else to form the partnerships for our construction schools, along with a lot of the internships and apprentices that we need. So I wanted to say thank you to them.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Susan. Mr. Craig?
Colonel McKnight, always a pleasure to see you. Thank you for being here. In the vein of recognizing the Army, perhaps some of you saw it, but pretty exciting. Cocoa Beach High School, JROTC unit, won the Academic Team Award, number one in the world. They beat fourteen hundred and ninety-eight other academic teams from across the world, including JROTC units from Germany and Italy. Lieutenant Colonel James Desjardain, perhaps you recognize that name. He was a finalist for our Teacher of the Year. He runs the JROTC unit there at Cocoa Beach. An amazing, amazing accomplishment to be number one in the world. The students included Seth Nederstrom, John Stotts, Nicole Weaver, and Jonathan Parent. So a big shout out to them and congratulations for a job well done representing Brevard County and our military.
Ms. Deskovich? Mr. Ziegler? Okay. I just have one quick thing, and that is I do not believe that we have had an opportunity to address at a board meeting the fact that Brevard Public Schools is once again in a district. So many thanks to all of our teachers, administrators, support staff, students who worked really hard, and of course, all the people at the district that support them in doing that. So thank you all for all of your hard work and that achievement. We applaud it. Dr. Mullins, anything you'd like to share?
Only that I echo the congratulations to our students, our schools, and our staff for a phenomenal academic year and just a great congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Mrs. Belford and members of the board, on this morning's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, eighteen consent items, eight action items, and two information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations and item G28 on departmental school initiated agreements have been revised. Additionally, the item on job description buyer two was moved from consent to action item G29.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Craig to approve the, or to adopt the agenda of July 11th, 2017. Any discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Thank you, Mrs. Belford. On this morning's agenda, there are fifteen administrative staff members for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Ziegler to approve the administrative staff recommendations. Is there any discussion? Please vote. And the motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins?
Let me take this opportunity to recognize and welcome our new administrative staff members present with us this morning. Mr. Reed is ready with his running shoes and microphone. First, congratulations go out to Bradley Merrill on his reclassification and transfer from the position of Assistant Principal at Bayside High School to the position of Principal at Hoover Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, board members. I have my family here. I want to thank them, my wife, for her conditional support, even when I'm difficult to support. My parents for their encouragement, even when maybe I don't need it, or even when I've had enough of it. So thank you so much for that. Christine Moore, who couldn't be here today, she's up in Tallahassee. She was my principal the last four years, has been a wonderful mentor, along with Robin Novelli. Sherry Bowman, thank you so much for your support over the last year or so. And also Lena Wybell, the new principal at Bayside. I know she's going to do a phenomenal job. She's a great pick, and thank you for the help in the transition as we kind of flip-flop here. I'm just so excited to be able to serve the students, the staff, and the community, and the residents of Indian Atlantic, and everybody involved at Hoover Middle School. So thank you very much.
Congratulations to Ivor Mitchell on his appointment to the position of ten-month Assistant Principal at Cocoa High School.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. Thank you again, Dr. Burns and the board. I'm very excited to join Cocoa High School on the leadership of Principal Wilson. Just really motivated to pushing every student towards a higher level and supporting all the excellent work happening at the high school. Very honored and very excited about this upcoming year. Thank you.
And congratulations to Heather Legate on her reclassification from the position of teacher to the position of ten-month Assistant Principal at O'Gally High School.
Thank you. I want to thank the board and the community, my husband Frankie, for all his support, going through all the process and all the stressing I did. My principal, Mr. Solomon, who kind of nudged me in the direction of administration, and I'm really excited to look forward to working with him as an administrator at O'Gally High School. Thanks.
Also, congratulations to Thomas Strain for his reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher at Rockledge High to the position of ten-month Assistant Principal at Jackson Middle School.
Thank you, board members. I appreciate your time and your efforts, everything you do. I want to thank my wife, who's with my family in Iowa right now, is a traditional summertime thing. My mom, my dad, my family, my Rockledge High family. Nothing would be possible without everyone of you back there. I appreciate it. Ms. Susan, thank you very much for the opportunity. I look forward to working with everybody in the community and making this place as good as it can be. Thank you.
And congratulations to Frank Marcian on his reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher on assignment at Palm Bay Magnet High School to the position of ten-month Assistant Principal at Jefferson Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, and the rest of the board. Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to thank my wife, who has not here, she's at work, for putting up with me. We were on vacation, and she brought the suntan oil and the beach towels down, and I brought a school improvement plan down with me. So I'd like to thank them. The best thing about Brevard County District Schools is everybody encouraged me along my trip to become an administrator. Especially thank Mrs. Bowman, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Judd Kaminsky, Nancy Schuler, all helped me along the way, and I hope to make a very positive involvement with the kids and make them our future. Thank you.
Congratulations to Megan Keane on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Guidance Services Professional at Stone Magnet Middle School to the position of ten-month Assistant Principal at Merritt Island High School.
Thank you to the board. Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. I would also like to thank Ms. Bowman, Ms. Rodriguez, and Mr. Novelli. Throughout my career, I've had the opportunity to work with some amazing administrators that I would also like to thank. Mrs. Archer, Mrs. Lot, Ms. Teji, Ms. Kupac, Mr. Gavara, Mrs. Bland, and Ms. Campbell. I appreciate all of your support, all of your guidance, all that you've taught me, and your friendship. Thank you to my good friend Jennifer for being here today and your support. To my mom and my dad, I'm not going to look at my mom while I talk because I'm sure she's going to start crying, but you're truly wonderful parents, and thank you for teaching me to never give up on my dreams. I am who I am today because of both of you. To my amazing husband, thank you for putting up with me. You're a wonderful father. Thank you for all that you do. And while I am sad to leave my stone family, I am very excited to now be a Merritt Island Mustang. So thank you so much. And thank you to Ms. Vega. I appreciate it.
Next, we congratulate Heather Holden on her appointment to the position of ten-month Assistant Principal at Southwest Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins and school board, for this opportunity. For those of you who don't know me, I'm moving here from Indian River County, and I'm very excited to be a part of Brevard Public Schools, and more importantly, to be a part of the Great Southwest and become a Bronco. And I thank you, Mr. Scher, for giving me that opportunity. One of my dear friends, Jill Mengier, is here with me from Vero today because my husband and son are playing baseball. That's what we do every summer, and my two older children are at work. So thank you all. Thank you for welcoming me to your school.
Congratulations Nicholas Stewart on his reclassification from the position of Guidance Counselor to the position of ten-month Assistant Principal at Space Coast Junior Senior High School.
I would also like to thank the board for giving me this opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Majeska Vick, for having the faith in me. We've built a good relationship over the last year. Looking forward to my new role. Thank you to my family, my colleagues here that joined us today. And thank you to my wife for her loving and support. It's not easy taking care of the two young ones so I can get some grad school work done. So thank you very much.
And moving on, we congratulate Paloma Ferreira on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Literacy Coach at Jackson Middle School to the position of ten-month Assistant Principal at Vieira High School.
Thank you so much to the board for allowing me to be here and giving me this opportunity. My parents unfortunately cannot be here, but my husband is, and I'd like to thank him for all the support through graduate school and the wonderful family we have. We have a six-year-old, and he decided to go to summer camp instead of coming here today. He thought he would have more fun there. And I'm very excited to go and work for the Vieira community under Mr. Alba and continue to learn here in Brevard County. Also, I'd like to thank Mrs. Jones, who I worked under her leadership for five years at Jackson Middle School, and I wish the best to the faculty and staff. I'll miss everyone there. Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, congratulations to Lucian Melendez on his reclassification from the position of teacher to the position of ten-month Assistant Principal at Heritage High School.
Good morning. It's a great day to be a Panther. Glad to thank my family for their support. Also like to thank the school board, Dr. Sullivan, Ms. Bowman, Dr. Harris. Thank you for continuing to support me and giving me the opportunity to work with the heritage families. Thank you, Ms... Gosh. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Just one last huge congratulations to all our newly appointed leaders and a sincere thank you to the family and the mentors who were recognized this morning, who have helped raise up these quality individuals to lead our kids, lead our teachers, and lead our community. Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Dr. Mullins, and congratulations to all of you. We are now at our public comment section of the meeting, and I know many of you probably have things that you would rather do than sit and watch the rest of the board meeting. So while we congratulate you, we certainly do not expect that you remain with us. If you have things you would like to do, we respect that. So I'll go ahead and begin giving direction on public comment. If you all would like to make your way out, you're welcome to do so. Three.
This instructional reappointments. And intro PR team. Thank you.
Okay, we are now at the public comment section of our board meeting. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Please be reminded that statements shall be directed to the board chairperson. No person may address or question board members individually. The board chairperson may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If an individual does not observe reasonable decorum, the board chairperson may request that individual leave the meeting. Please keep in mind that we often have children present and/or children viewing our board meetings, and we encourage an environment appropriate for their viewing. While no action will be taken this morning by the board on items raised in public discussion, board members may assist with connecting public speakers to district staff that can assist with concerns, respond in brief to comments made by speakers that require immediate clarification, request that a response to specific speakers be placed on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." These responses will take place at the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. I request that you speak into the microphone and state your name prior to speaking. We have three speakers with us this morning. The first, Melody Johnson, then Dan Bennett, then Andrew Dreisbach. Melody, if you would please approach the podium.
Good morning. My name is Melody Johnson. I'm the Volusia County School Board Chairwoman this year. And I want to say good morning to the Deputy Superintendent, the Chairwoman, and the school board members. I'm here today to encourage you, as we have an opportunity to positively impact every public school student in Florida, as well as our teachers and staff. Currently, over eighty percent of Florida students are being stolen from, in the districts, through a formula we call the DCD. The state is failing our students just like corporate welfare. We are now serving educational welfare. I have some bullet points. I've given you a handout that you can look at. But from 2004 to 2018, Volusia County has lost eight hundred and forty million dollars through this obscure formula. You guys have lost thirty-nine million. For every dollar that leaves Brevard County, only ninety-eight cents comes back. Volusia gets ninety-six cents. In 2016 legislative session, Representative Metz filed a House bill, and the companion bill was through Senator Dorothy Hugel that wanted to delete this formula. It was vetoed. We wanted to do a study last year. It was vetoed. So we decided, as I've spoken to many attorneys, that you want to know the outcome of something before you do it. So we don't want to study anymore. We want a constitutional amendment. We want the voters to hear that their tax dollars are being taken from their students in fifty-five out of sixty-seven counties. Dr. David Dinslow works for University of Florida. He helped develop the formula. My husband created an appointment with him, with Representative Costello, and he even has said this needs to be redone. It's harming more than it's helping. I am asking you to join with us to solidify a grassroots movement that began over a week ago. Lake County is fully on board as of last night. Not only did they do a resolution to support this effort, they are now, and I've included a possible constitutional amendment. I cannot do this alone. So I'm gathering a group of leaders that are passionate, as we all are, about this issue. I'm fully committed to altering our children's destiny. I'm asking each of you, as school board members and staff, to go to your city commissions, your legislators, your businesses, your chambers of commerce, your realtors, your PTAs, your SACS, whoever you believe will care about our children as much as we do and take this to their communities. Get them on fire. I am so over this formula. I've included some action steps in your handouts to a constitutional amendment that will hold our children harmless. I started my Twitter feed with the hashtag #DCDTheft. I am frustrated by this formula. As you see, Volusia County has the worst impact. So I want us to join together, fifty-five counties strong, giving corporate welfare or educational welfare to twelve counties in the state. This doesn't make sense to me anymore, and I'm done rolling over. And I thank you for your time. I always like when people finish early.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for joining us. For joining us today and sharing this information. If you would like to touch base with Mr. Reed back at the table there, he is our Government and Community Relations person, and he would be a great point person, and then we'll have additional discussion as well.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming. All right, Mr. Bennett?
Good morning, members of the board.
Good morning, Dr. Mullins. By the way, yes to everything that she just said. Please look into that, look into that further. I don't know what I have new to say to you, but being a teacher, and there's still a teacher in me, sometimes we review the lesson from last time, and the big test is coming up. Sometime, I guess in two weeks, on July 25th, we go back to the bargaining table at the BFT office at one o'clock. It's very important that we get that right, as I've talked about. I just want to review a couple of lessons or a couple of things that I've talked about in past meetings. It's very important that we get things in writing. That's the point of writing a contract and writing things down. There was a time when we all knew each other pretty well, the board, or the BFT officers knew HR pretty well. We could agree to things at the bargaining table without necessarily having to put them into the contract. And as the years have gone by, we have a rollover of new people, new board members, new people in HR, new people in district, and at BFT. We find that some of those agreements, or at least one in particular, was not as strong as it should have been and it could have been. And that has to deal with that the evaluation manual that was jointly created will be followed all the time. So we brought it to the table that we want a simple statement in our contract that the IPIAS manual will be followed. It's nothing that the board should be afraid of. It's nothing that should, there should be hesitancy to do that. Last year, we brought an example of where it wasn't followed, and we ended up all the way in arbitration where the board defended vigorously. The district defended vigorously that, no, that manual doesn't have to be followed. That was a break in policy. It's something that should be in writing. And the other thing that absolutely needs to be in writing is because of current legislation, or legislation just passed, is that annual contract teachers need to have job security. We saw at this board meeting just now, we welcomed another round of administrators. Those are annual contract employees. You all have a policy procedure for how you welcome those people into those new positions. And for all the annual contract administrators, which is all of them, for all the annual contract administrators to do a good job. They are automatically reappointed in May. They're not under contract, but it just, it just happens. Well, for teachers, we have a contract, and the legislature is making an attack on our contract. I can guess, it's not my place to do, it's not my place to say what the district proposal will be, but I would guess that due to current legislation, new legislation, your bargaining team may bring to us a need to change our contract because of the legislation about annual contract reappointment. Well, I'm asking, and I'm going to demand at the bargaining table, that you all do something in your policies, procedures, to give annual contract teachers job security. You currently have a board policy that talks about reappointment of employees, the Board Policy 3130. You can add to that policy. You can take a couple of sentences from our contract and just put it in your policies and procedures so that way we know it will happen. Yes, it's something that should be written down. No, it's not something that we can leave the table and say, oh, trust them, they'll do it. Because even if we trust you, you won't be around forever. So we should put it, we should put it in writing. And finally, I'll say that as we get good things at the table, we don't need to agree to other bad things just to kind of balance them out. That's been a longstanding tradition of bargaining. We'll get something we want, and then it's, well, how about this too? Let's just do the right thing at the table. We'll be back July 25th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Andrew Dreisbach, am I saying that correctly? Excellent. Excellent.
Andrew Dreisbach, that is correct. I just wanted to come out today and introduce myself. First of all, I want to say a thank you to all the teachers and principals that got promotions today. Ran them out of the room, so they didn't get a chance to hear me, but that's all right. I'm with the Brevard County Fire Department. I'm a firefighter paramedic, and we have recently started a new public relations team. Part of that idea is just to get out with our teachers, and I wanted to come out and introduce ourselves and introduce, since I'm the lead for that team, all right? So, really just wanted to get out, introduce myself, open up communications with our superintendent, the school board members, principals, and of course, our teachers. It's my hope that we'll be able to do some things, volunteer things, out at your schools, and I just wanted to let you know who I was and what we're doing. Really just community PR, you know, first day of school, like to come out, open up car doors, pass out pencils, be there on the first day of school while kids are getting dropped off by their parents. So, I'll let you guys know what those things are. I really just wanted to come out and let you know that Fire Department supports our teachers, we love our teachers, and we love our school board members.
Thank you so much. Mr. Dreisbach, could you, do you happen to have a card with you?
I don't, but I can give some.
That would be wonderful. I have a PR issue I'd like to discuss with you, not related to schools, so, thank you.
I know where you're going.
Yes. Not to keep it in secret, but I, as, as many people know, I'm a big Johnny Prevention advocate, and we have had some, some serious losses in our community. So, great opportunity for us to partner in getting the word out and hoping to keep more kids safe in our community, so I will follow up with you, sir. Thank you very much. Any other board members have comments they would like to make? Okay, then I believe that moves us to the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins.
There are eighteen agenda items under this category, one with prior information.
Does any board member wish to pull any items from consent? Mr. Susan?
Just like to pull F-23.
All right. Pam, would you please pull item F-23 for discussion? I will then entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of item F-23 pulled for discussion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Duskovich, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Craig.
Sorry, I didn't want to just be pulling things, but I, I want to make sure that I understand, let's take like F-18, for example, the exceptional student education. There is a new ESE plan that we have to adjust based on legislation. I don't see anywhere on our, our board docs that the attorney has looked at it, and this is obviously a legislative issue that, that we need to follow law with, and I don't know if that's happened, or it probably has, but I don't know how we would know that. And I bring it up more for a, a knowledge issue, to make sure that we understand that our attorney is now reviewing all these things, specifically stuff like that that has to do with legislation.
Ms. Enval, would you like to respond?
Can you hear me? No. Sorry. That's better. I think effective July 1st, or shortly thereafter, maybe not now, there's going to be a place on our agenda that you can see that I've looked at everything, but I have looked at everything this agenda.
Cool.
I think we're adding, aren't we adding a button or something? Yes.
I assume so. I just wanted to make sure that, that now that you're on board, and just for the public knowledge, that, that we, because that's a pretty big issue, is to, is to make sure that we're following the law.
And their legislative changes, yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Please vote.
Was there a motion?
Yes.
There was a motion, and a second.
And discussion.
And discussion.
And now we're voting.
Motion passes five zero. All right, that brings us to item F-23. Mr. Susan, motion to open for discussion?
Thank you. The issue is that a Cocoa High-
Wait, motion to open for discussion?
Motion approved. Second.
So, it's moved to approve by Mr. Ziegler and seconded by Mr. Susan for item F-23, which opens for discussion. Mr. Susan, discussion, please.
So, it's just an issue that Cocoa High School, they're talking about building out the twelve classrooms, and if, in order to build a new twelve classroom wing, if they would destroy the actual facility that's there, I think it's like building eighteen or something. The main reason is, is that they're saying that there's flooding and stuff like that that comes into the school. Two thousand eight, when I was coaching wrestling, we used to take the wrestling mats out of there to borrow them for ours, and there was flooding in there. So, what I did was, when this was coming up, I drove down there and looked at it. The actual building's in perfect shape. The issue is, is that the, the water runs right off the top and right to the building, and then the grade that comes from the driveway runs it right back into it. So, if we just change that, we don't have to destroy the building. And I just wanted to reiterate that to staff and everything else, that we don't end up destroying building eighteen to just build it on a building for twelve classrooms, that's all.
Ms. Han.
Oh. You didn't even need to come up. I didn't see you going.
Oh, no. Thank you. Just appreciate the opportunity to comment on that. On building eighteen, there were some issues raised in the stakeholder meetings. That's one of them that I think we would have to address as we do renovations to building eighteen. The twelve classroom addition building is planned for a separate facility that is a little bit to the east, if I have my directions correctly, of building eighteen. So, we have a renovation in eighteen, and we have a new classroom addition that are two separate projects, but we want to bundle them with the sales Certax renovations as well, so we get a little bit more interest from the design build community. But we will look at that, and I appreciate the comments, and thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any additional discussion on that, Mr. Susan? Are you good?
No, it's just, it always bothered me that we had water and they had it on top of those crates in there, so.
Okay. Any additional discussion from other board members? Then please vote. And the motion passes five zero. We will then move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins.
There are eight, there are eight items for your consideration. The first one is item G-27 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to, move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins.
The next one is item G-28 on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Ziegler.
I just wanted to point out on the item Health First Project Search, which is a, kind of like a job internship program for, for students who get special diplomas, although diplomas are changing. There's going to be, I want to let the board know, there's going to be some modifications to that program in that apparently there's a rule by Project Search, the national organization, that states that in order for the project to be a Project Search program for these students, that the internships must be with the host company. That provides a challenge, because some companies that are willing to host these kids in their facility with the classroom and put them through job rotation programs are not big enough to provide adequate internships, training for them, and yet, we could rotate them, place them into comparable businesses nearby, but that doesn't qualify for Project Search. So, the Project Search team has reached out to me to let me know that they're looking at, this is, I think, for the case of Palm Bay, where we also have a Project Search. Nothing's changing with Health First, but I want to let you know that they are on top of what the students need and figuring out a way to expand the opportunity for those students without the restrictions of Project Search. So, you'll probably hear more about that as it develops, but I wanted to thank the team for really making sure that we don't abandon something that's so important to our kids and finding a way to solve the problem.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Ziegler, and I hope that as we move forward, if there's anything that we as a board or an organization can do to support their efforts, you'll keep us in the loop on that so we can-
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, one of the thoughts I had, just as a side note, is to, if we have more students in the Vieira area, is creating a, a job training program for these students in collaboration, well, jointly, say, with the, with the courthouse, with the county commissioner, with the health department, where that's four different organizations, there's not one host, and therefore, it wouldn't qualify, quote, as Project Search, but I think it would make for a great program here in the Vieira area if we have enough kids that have been interested, and they're working on ramping that up also.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Susan.
So, I met with Vocational Rehab last week to put together a STAR program, which came into, implemented last November into our school systems, which is exactly what you're asking to do, other than Project Search. And met with them, and they talked about how at every one of our schools, we have a STAR coordinator, how it is exactly set up the same way any kid with a 504, an IEP, or learning disabilities at the rate of Project Search would be able to not only get the pre-employment, also the internship, then the backend, and go right into vocational rehab eventually, and that is not specific to the site of where it, what you were just speaking about. So, I can put those people in touch with whoever it is that you wanted to, so that we can work that out. It's an amazing program the federal government put together.
Any additional discussion on item G-28?
No, ma'am.
Please vote.
Server error. Please vote.
Yeah, something's going on.
Pam will need to do a voice vote. We're getting a server error. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins.
Item, item G-29 is a job description buyer two for your consideration.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? Please vote, voice vote, since we're rebooting.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins.
We move on to item G-30 on master in-service plan for 2017-18.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Duskovich. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Please vote. How many of us are back up?
Not me.
I'm good.
You're off too? Okay.
Yeah, we're going to have to pause to get back online.
We'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. We're going to take a brief pause to give everybody an opportunity to get back in. I think that might make Pam's life a little easier.
Okay. You back in?
We all in?
You need to log out.
Go here. Okay, we're good.
We're good? Pam, you in?
Yes.
Okay. So, that brings us, I believe, Dr. Mullins, to item G-31.
Item G-3, item G-31 is to amend the Orion Charter School Contract.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan to approve the Orion Charter School Contract Amendment. Is there any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Please vote. Motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins.
Item G-32 is on the application to the Florida Department of Education for the Access Project Grant.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Please vote. Motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins.
Item G-33 is the request from the Girl Scouts of Citrus Council to access classrooms to recruit students per board policy 9700 dot zero one.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion?
I have a comment about G-33 and G-34, if I'm allowed to address them both at once. First, I think it's fantastic that we've allowed the scouts into our classrooms in the past, but we currently have, and it's literally just one, two, three schools at the most, I think, that they're refusing to allow them in the classroom. So, I, I just, I don't know what the feeling of the board is on that. They're refusing to allow the scouts to access the classroom for their three-minute presentation.
So, Ms. Enval and I actually had a discussion about this topic last night, because there are kind of two issues that tend to come up when this item comes up for approval. One is access being denied, and one is parents wishing to opt their children out of the presentation, their wish is not being followed. So, Ms. Enval is actually going to include discussion on that item in her principal training on the 18th of July to make sure that we're all on the same page with it. So, hopefully, that will resolve that issue, but if you continue to hear issues, by all means, let us know.
Okay. Thank you.
You're most welcome. Any other discussion? Okay, please vote. The motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins.
Item G-34 is the request from the Boy Scouts of America to access classrooms to recruit students per board policy 9700 dot zero one.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Please vote. Motion passes five zero. All right, that moves us to the information agenda, which includes items for board review and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight, or this morning. Dr. Mullins.
There are two, there are two items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss any items on the information agenda? Okay. Then we are now at board member reports and discussion points section. In addition to discussion points, I request that board members please include any information requests to be placed on board assigned tasks during this time as well. Anyone have any reports? Mr. Susan.
Well, you can go first.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Duskovich.
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Susan. It's a, a touchy area, so guidance from you if I, because it's an open investigation, so I don't want to adjust the investigation, but I would like to address community concerns about our policy slash procedure of notifying Eastern Florida State College if a teacher's dual-enrolling. Do we have a policy in place? Do we want to look at changing it for current circumstances in the future? Is it, is it our place to let them know if we have a teacher under investigation that's also teaching our dual enrollment students at Eastern Florida? So, I've had a lot of questions in the community. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion and see where we want to go with that.
Ms. Enval, could you address Ms. Duskovich's concerns?
Sure. We don't have a current policy that requires us to notify them, but it certainly could be something that we could discuss. Is it there? Is that better?
It's very quiet.
Yeah. It's quiet. So, there's, it's not in our current policy. First of all, it's an act of investigation for us as well, so we can't disclose too much information until we have our thing, so, but if the concern is if there's been an allegation brought against one of our, is that the concern? If one, if there's been an allegation brought against one of our employees that involves children?
That is also a teacher at Eastern Florida teaching dual enrollment classes, so also still contact with our students.
We would first need to know whether those teachers were active, actually, there might be instances, we don't know where our teachers are actually teaching at another agency, because we don't have a current policy that requires them to do that. The only policy that has a requirement to have them report to the school board about dual employment is if it will conflict, and so, right now, that would not be a conflict. So-
So, we don't have records of teachers that are teaching dual enrollment? That's all Eastern Florida?
Not usually.
We don't know who our students are going to as-
We don't usually know if our teachers are working for Publix or Walt Disney World or any of that stuff. Only, the only reason we know if they're outside employment would conflict with their current responsibilities is a BPS employee.
So, would we be interested in having a procedure? Would it be a procedure or a policy that we would notify Eastern Florida if we had a teacher under investigation, especially if we don't know that they're teaching over there?
So, I, I think, Ms. Enval, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but us having the knowledge, I mean, there's, there's no requirement for them to communicate that. So, even if they did communicate that to us, that they were working at Eastern Florida or they were working, even if they were working at a private childcare facility- or they were working, even if they were working at a private childcare facility after school hours or during the summer or any of those things, the other issue I think that we face is that the particular case that you're referencing, there has not been a conviction on that. So what is, what is the implication of us contacting the other employer if we did have that knowledge? As far as our legal, you know, are the, are we violating something there by giving that information?
We could be, depending on how much information we have and what our internal investigation is. If we've turned it over to law enforcement and arrest has been made, then the arrest would trigger the notification, their fingerprints would come back to, and they would probably have a duty to self-report anything like that to their employer, so if they're working for another educational institution as well.
I think one of the challenges in this particular case, Ms. Duskevich, is that the investigation has been ongoing for some time. The arrest was not until recently. So I think as soon as the arrest was made, the other employer was made aware of the situation. But prior to the arrest.
Are they made aware by us or no? I'm just wondering if we have a responsibility here. That's what I'm trying to.
There's no legal obligation for us to notify another agency.
Do we have a moral responsibility?
We could have procedures in place, but you have to remember that anybody who's charged with anything, they're deemed innocent until proven guilty. So it's not until that conviction is entered that, you know?
And I can't imagine that if there's just a accusation and we relayed that to another business, that we would then be, put ourselves in a position of liability.
Until they're convicted of that.
In their life. The other thing that you bring up though, that maybe Ms. Kent can clear up is, I thought that we were, we required employees that had additional outside employment that was similar, therefore possible potential conflict of interest, to notify us of such employment.
There is, under the ethics policy, the conflict of interest policy, they do have an obligation if there is a, hang on a few.
So teaching, daycare, although then the comment, Ms. Duskevich, you made about teaching dual enrollment, I'm curious how that's any more possible, being that our dual enrollment is limited to, I thought during the school day and replacing an existing period. Is there still? I thought, I thought that was cut way back because of the legislation that requires us now to pay for the credit hours.
When, when I taught at Eastern Florida State College as an adjunct professor, I had dual enrollment students in my class. At that time, I was not involved with private public schools, but I had dual enrollment students in my class as an adjunct for, for Eastern Florida State College. So there's, there's no, it just so happens that this particular teacher both worked for the district and taught courses at Eastern Florida, but that, that's not generally the case.
That changed about three or four years ago with legislation, that I didn't think we were providing night class opportunities for dual enrollment anymore. Could be wrong in that. We used to back six, seven, eight, going back, but I thought as of the change in legislation, we had a really reel back on that. So anyways, not that we need to resolve that right now.
If it, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
If it helps, the, the policy on conflict of interest requires all employees that have a financial interest in a company that derives revenues from students, those kind of things, receive money directly for students, then they're required to file the request for dual employment so that we can evaluate whether that truly is a conflict. Like, let's say they're working for a software vendor that is also ours or something. We want to make sure there's not truly a conflict, or they want to work for a tutoring company and also tutor their same students. That's where the conflict goes in. As far as this particular instance is concerned, he's just teaching extra.
Mr. Susan?
So the question is, is if we have a moral obligation to allow Eastern Florida State, to let them know that there has been an arrest. And then that way, there's, there's a student that's inside of our schools who is part of that accusation, is also dual enrolling and ends up in the same area or close to that teacher, that would be something that I would not want from our schools. So I would, I would look forward to looking at a policy that we would just at least notify them that this has occurred. I know that they're supposed to trigger, but we can't tell them what to do over at Eastern Florida State, but at the same time, they have a moral obligation to. Does that make sense?
It's not just the arrest. You mentioned the arrest. It's also up for discussion. Is it, is it appropriate when they're under investigation and on administrative leave?
Right.
We've, we've deemed that that's important enough to put them on administrative leave and yet our students are still.
We have to.
Have access to.
By law, we have to.
What?
We have to.
We have to what?
Put them on administrative leave.
Right, but yet we don't notify Eastern Florida and our students are still going to this teacher.
Ms. Enval, can you just clarify? Because I think the issue there is, I don't think there's a single person up here that wouldn't love to give that information, because I think we all feel as passionate as you do, Ms. Duskevich, about, you know, doing whatever we can to protect students. But I believe there are legal implications to us sharing that information when we put someone on administrative leave. Is there not?
There, there is. So usually you'll put someone on administrative leave and you'll then conduct your investigation into the allegations that are brought forth. So those allegations could be confirmed or they could be unconfirmed. And if they are confirmed to an extent that we notify law enforcement, that would trigger an arrest, then that kind of takes, takes care of itself, because if they're working at another institution, they have to self-report there as well, or the arrest will, you know, trigger everything. So until they're, essentially, they're innocent until they're proven guilty. So I would say if we have knowledge that, we have something that we're looking into to determine whether or not we feel they need to be removed from the classroom or whatever, until that investigation is done, I think it would be premature to notify someone else. And if it's egregious enough to where it triggers an arrest, then obviously that, that, that'll kind of take care of itself as well.
Any additional discussion? Mr. Craig?
So instead of being reactive to an individual situation, I think what, the more prudent direction is to look at a expansive policy, because you can't just limit it to Eastern Florida. Could be FIT, could be a daycare facility. It could be a charter. It could be a school in another county. We have students that move between counties. It could be anywhere a childcare facility is. So we need to look at it from a bigger picture standpoint and not limit it to the individual situation that just happened. Certainly, that's the launching point, but to say that this is something we have to do with just this one institution is very narrow, obviously. So I'd like to see us figure out what the legal requirements are, what the administrative requirements would be to track all that for 10,000 employees. I assume that's pretty high. And, and how we would actually go about facilitating, tracking that data on a, on a monthly or quarterly or yearly basis. It's going to continue to change as people move professions or move second jobs or pick up part-time jobs. I would just imagine that HR would be overwhelmed by trying to just track that, but it certainly, we need to figure out how we can possibly address some of the concerns that the board has and look at some other districts and how they do it, and look for some best practices across the educational industry, whether it's K through 12, or whether what Eastern Florida does or what FIT does, so that we can kind of come to a consensus, what's best for this county. That would be my suggestion.
Excellent suggestions, Mr. Craig. Any additional discussion on that topic? Okay, then other discussion items. Mr. Susan?
Got a issue that came up through the homeschool groups, occurred most recently. They were going to come to the meeting and run a bunch of speakers and stuff like that, but I asked them not to. I thought that if we could take a look at it and then possibly have some kind of an action on it later on, maybe in August. But basically what occurred is our district required beyond the actual statutes requirements for new incoming homeschool students to provide birth certificates and things, driver's licenses, birth certificates and stuff like that, which is further than what the statutes call for. I asked the Florida Legal Defense homeowner, or Home, Homeschool Legal Defense Association lawyer to just tell me what he was thinking. And he basically said that, per the Department of Education, which is stated there in their frequently asked questions on their page, that anything that exceeds what the Florida statutes are, are in violation of the Florida statutes. So I wanted to take a look at this, provide some kind of background, just so that Ms. Enval can get moving on it. But basically, I think we're in violation here and just wanted to bring it up as a topic. And if anybody has any questions, I can answer those.
Ms. Enval, did you get a copy of this from Mr. Susan?
I do. I haven't had a chance to review it all.
Absolutely. So if, if you could, at, at some point in the future, near future, take a look at that and then just kind of give us your, you can just shoot us an email with your, your thoughts on it, so we can decide how to move forward. Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion items? Okay, then I believe that brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Mullins, I see there is a budget update presentation.
Yes, and Ms. Urker has come to the podium. Our chief financial officer will provide us some information.
Good morning. At our budget workshop on June 13th, I promised to come back today and give you an update. So that's what we're going to talk about today. It's an overall update of where we're at. We've still got a ways to go. And we're going to start with that on our timeline. We've actually come a long way getting to where we're at. We've done a lot of new things this year, looking at our requests, trying to be more transparent. We do still have a ways to go. We still have to get the second calculation, go through the tentative hearing and the final hearing in September. I think one thing that's been real different this year is our budget development process has been much more deliberate, much more purposeful and much more transparent. First, we're going to talk about the general fund. We are going to cover most of the funds today briefly, because we haven't talked a lot about the others, but let's start with the general fund. Our Florida Education Finance Program, commonly called the FEFP, looking at our differences between what we're getting from the special session calculation compared to fourth count for 1617. Our base FEFP went up $4.6 million. That was $59.98 per student for us. For the state, that calculation is $100. There's sparsity supplements, DC, the district cost differential and things that change that, so we don't necessarily get it. The three highest base student allocation districts, Monroe at $318.87, Collier at $242.43, and Taylor at $225.45. There were three districts who lost. Washington Special Unit, their BSA went down $4.71. The Madison County, down $7.83, and Gulf County, down $19.62. So it's a wide mix across the board. Our discretionary local effort, this is the .748, it did see an increase due to the increase in the tax roll, property values of 2.2 million. And then lots of other little things that are in the FEFP net out to just under $1 million at $971,000. So when you look at the change, over change, it's $7.8 million that we got new this year from the FEFP calculations. Now, again, this year, I mentioned this last year, and I believe Dr. Blackburn has talked some about it as well. We are recommending for this year that we reconsider changing the way we appropriate federally connected. The statute that that money is provided to us under is 1011.62, Funds for Operations of School. The legislation that's been behind it the last three years is for operations, so it does allow us the flexibility to use it within our operations. So at this point in time, our recommendation is going to be to bring that back in. So for the current year funding, that's $2 million over and above what we've been using in the operating fund out of that, and would bring our total recurring available from FEFP to 9.8 if that's what we choose to do. At this point, I think it's important for me to stop, make sure that the audience, as well as the board, understands these are not final numbers. We are just looking at the current update. There are changes that will be made between now and the 27th based on feedback and as we begin to get better information. So these are not final and not what we would expect to necessarily see on September, at the September. We'd love to see it, but we'll see what happens. One thing that we've done this year is spent a lot of time looking within ourselves and trying to identify where we could bring money into a budgetary savings that's recurring. This year, we had for our benefit to the 12-month employees from a salary, we gave them an additional six days reduction in their annual workdays, allowed us to close the district down for two full weeks. We saved about $70,000 from that, the energy costs. So that's a recurring savings we can throw in. I had mentioned to you previously several times about our new department budget process, where we looked at prior year history. Out of that, we pulled just over $900,000 out of the department budgets. We've also been looking at some other options within the department budgets that could bring us $1.2 million. That list has been put together. Dr. Blackburn still needs to review it and I believe he's going to want you guys to review it as well before it becomes a permanent fixture in our budget, but we do have that option. Vacant positions, which we've mentioned before, these were positions that were vacant all year long. They've been removed from the budget at $2 million. And then we took another lapse, look at our lapse salaries retirees, and we've had more retirees than we estimated the last time we looked at this, and we're now at 1.4. So the overall here, mainly driven by bringing in the other department budget reductions, we're looking at, it's gone up about 1.5 million on the recurring budget savings that we shared with you on June 13th. Now, one thing I do want to point out here, is we are trying to tighten our own belt, do what we need to do that's the right thing, but I also want to point out, once we've gone to these wells, it becomes much more harder to go back again and keep going back. We're getting pretty lean with this. Staff has done, Cabinet has done a really good job going in and looking at it. We still need to make sure we understand that what they're proposing, they could cut, doesn't hurt our students along the way. So that's what the review we still need to do. Our mandated usage, of course, our committed categoricals that we have to spend in a certain way, it's $90,000. The increase in FRS contribution, we had estimated that at 1.3. We got the rates in from FRS. It went up by about $156,000 to $1,455,000. Our charter school, charter school growth, we had an estimate in there. It was a little high. It's been reduced down by about $264,000. So our actual calculation based on the first count puts them at $4,709,000. One item we're still missing in here is any staff increases that we need to do, particularly in regards to the lowest 300. We did have four schools fall into that. So I'm working with Ms. Klein, so we can get a better handle on what we need to do there, as well as any changes in Title I that we may want to look at in any mixture in our classrooms that we're needing to adjust. So that's still a to-be-determined. I can tell you, first look at lowest 300, I'm estimating $750,000 to $1 million that it will cost the district over and above the funding we'll get from the state. So when we bring all this together and look at our available recurring after our mandates, we started at 9.8. Budgetary savings, we believe we will have at 5.6. Our mandated usage, which does not include yet the lowest 300, and the rest of the staff increase look is 6.3. So we're looking at right now 9.2. Again, we do know that's going to adjust. And right now, the increase, ever what you saw last time, is driven mainly by federally connected and the budgetary cuts the departments are looking at adding into this. The other thing we've actually looked at and spent a lot of time in making available for trying to fund some of our priorities is our non-recurring budgetary savings. These are some things that have just fallen to the bottom of the line at the, after we've done, closed, then we looked at what we had. So we try to look at it a little bit different. We have some not, undesignated discretionary lottery funds that come to the district from that program after we've done all the allocations, and there's about $900,000 there. Federally connected, we still have about $4 million from the last two years that we had transferred over to capital. We've used a little bit of it. We've had some interest gain, but that's still available to bring back in and consider as part of a potential to fund for our priorities. We put in an estimate every year, just like the 4.7, what we think it's going to be based on today. on today. For this year, that estimate was about $300,000 higher, so we've pulled that back in. Same with school reserves. When we sit down and do our school allocations at the end of the year, there's typically something left. There's about a half million there. We've had some funding for technology, where the district's pre-funded some stuff. And so from that, E-rate funding is being given back to cover that pre-expenditure that we've done of $700,000. So we've got about $6.6 million of non-recurring dollars that we can look at, how we can help with our priorities going forward. Things we still have to look at, staffing needs is the big thing that's got me busy right now. As I mentioned earlier, the lowest 300, I'm looking at somewhere close to $1 million. Funding our budget priorities, we're still analyzing those as we finalize this number. And on July 27th of the tentative hearing, Dr. Blackburn will be bringing a recommendation of how we recommend funding those priorities. We'll be seeking your feedback and input on that. And from there, we'll build the final budget for September. We're also waiting on the second calculation of the FEFP. This is the adjustment made for the certification of the tax roll. The information I just got this week from Ms. Bleakley's office is that the tax roll is $38 billion, $38,759,682,715. This is approximately $174 million less than the first calculation is showing. However, over '16-'17, it's $2.9 billion higher than '16-'17. It's an 8.2% increase for us, which is very positive. Forecast I did for you back in February, I was estimating 6.9. So we have gained a lot, but we are looking at a potential slight impact in our second calculation from that change. Any questions on general fund before I move on to cap?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Ziegler.
The first point I want to discuss is the request by staff to change the federally connected to be general revenue. That all went into effect, or that effort all began before the current, before you all sat here. So I just want to let you know that I was very involved with that Altman when he started running this and that this district led that with the premise that we were severely deficient in capital revenue. And this was an idea of a solution. I know you all know that. I'm just, since the audience is here. Yes, the legislation came through that when that went into the FEFP, we have the discretion to go either way. And this board can decide how they want to do that. I can't. I believe that I stood on a belief that, and an argument, and I still stand on that, that we are capital deficient in this county. And that was the premise behind our effort, and I just have to be true to that effort. And I will not support moving that money into general revenue because we'd still need it in capital. If the four of you who did not drive that effort feel otherwise, that's fine. But I'm going to stand on what I drove out from the gate so that I don't come off as a hypocrite, changing direction midstream. So I just wanted to bring that up. The other question I have is you mentioned something that, interestingly, is new to me and was unaware of. Can you explain undesigned discretionary lottery money? Because I thought the only lottery money that came to us anymore was the A-plus money. Is this residual from A-plus?
It is.
Interesting. I thought that was specifically calculated on the number of, actually, it's the number of students, isn't it, per school? And then providing that allotment to the school based on what their enrollment was during the award period, then dividing it by whatever that school determined to be the distribution method, either to employees as bonuses or to projects or that nature. I'm curious how any school would have excess revenue.
When we ran it through the state funding formula and distributed the money, there's a portion left. We typically do have a portion left.
Okay.
This is not unusual. It's just not maybe been as transparent as it has been. It is a little higher this year than we have seen in some prior years, but it is not an unusual factor to have some of it left over that gets to fall to the district.
And that's a single year's excess?
Yes, sir.
Wow, okay. And as far as the federally connected, 4.1 million, Dr. Blackburn is supposed to be bringing to us a recommendation on how to utilize that. I've got some suggestions, but I'll discuss them with him so that, maybe they're already in his recommendation. I suppose that that'll be part of his presentation.
He's aware it's in this presentation?
But he was going to come with specifics, use for the 4 million per direction of the board?
I believe his specific use will be involved in funding the priorities.
Okay. And explain to me the E-rate reimbursement and how, you made a comment that that's pre-expenditure reimbursement.
Right. If we fund this for the school, for them, if they don't have the money in, we go ahead so they can take advantage of expenditures and deals that they have. And so this is helping to cover what we've funded within their group.
Okay, so just to clarify and make sure we're on the same page. And I don't know if this number is, probably not dead on, but about a $2 million budget for our ET department for technology. Is this pre-expenditure reimbursement in addition to the 2 million? So they still have the 2 million in their budget to work with? Or does this reduce their 2 million to 1.3?
No, they still have the 2 million.
They still have a solid 2 million to work with?
Yes.
Okay, that was not my understanding previously, that they would, they would get so much. And for those who may not understand, E-rate, it's basically, I believe it's federal? Is it federal or state? I forget, but it's...
It's federal.
Federal reimbursement. And depending on what our, is it our Title I status is or free and reduced, depends on what our percentage of reimbursement is. And I believe currently with our situation, it's about an 80% reimbursement. So if we were to spend $10 million on E-rate reimbursable, we would get 8 million back. And you're taking $700,000 off of that, off the top of that reimbursement. I just want to make sure and clear that our ET department is treated fairly like any other department that gets an allocation of budget and gets their full 2 million for their, for their department, not less $700,000, which was my originally, what I was led to believe.
No, but they got their original allocation through the department matrix process. Matter of fact, I think we, if I remember correctly, we increased your budget. You really did not, they didn't even take a hit within the matrix process because of what their expenditures have been. We actually ended up increasing their budget even slightly. They're actually getting about $100,000, $200,000 more than the 2 million. So we have added to them, too.
If you're giving them...
General allocation, nothing to a specific project.
Okay, as long as you're assuring me that if you're giving them more on top of what their budget is, and it's just coming back and it's not coming out of the budget, I'm okay with that.
Yes, it's not coming out of the budget.
Okay, and I believe, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Additional board member comments or questions on this portion of the presentation? Mr. Craig?
Just to clarify about the federally connected, actually, there were three of us that were part of that. It was the 2015 session. We all advocated for that, but not relevant. The, I'm under the same impression that that was, or I mean, we were part of that. So the three of us in the middle here actually advocated for that.
My apologies for the timing on that.
That's right. And utilized the, our relationships with the then speaker to get that. But I would say that, as a taxpayer looking at it, I'm concerned that we didn't utilize it to this point, to be quite honest with you. And I know we've had that discussion, but I think it needs to be in a transparent format. We need to be transparent with that. When we are saying that we don't have enough money for, and I'm not directing this at you because you weren't here, but when we, when we, when we say that we don't have enough capital funding and then we have money sitting in capital funding that is specifically designated for capital funding, yet we're not spending it, I still haven't figured out how or why that happened. And I think we need to figure out how and why that happened to make sure that we understand the process, the board needs to understand that process, why it would go sit in an unrestricted account and not be utilized through the budgeting process, again, before you were here. We need to make sure that we understand why that was done, and if there was a good reason for it, that's fine. But so far, no one's given us a reason for it other than nobody wanted to touch it because they weren't sure what to do with it.
The, I can tell you from last year, because last year I also proposed that we include this in our operations. What I was told by a couple of different members of it is that you wanted it for capital, but you hadn't decided how to spend it. And I walked away from that conversation, as I know Mr. Theodore did, thinking we were going to get a specific direction to do with it. And that's why it was held. Mr. Theodore and I have had conversations, so I felt very comfortable speaking on this with it. When we had some security issues came up, we did propose going ahead and using some of it for that. But my initial conversations last year at this time in making, again, the same recommendation because we were on as tight of a budget, that was my understanding from conversations with more than one of you, that this was capital, you wanted it there. The board hadn't decided how to use it. So that would be partly my misunderstanding on, that I was waiting for the board to decide what they wanted to do.
Okay, and actually, you know, it's on us as the board.
No, I think it's on all of us.
Well, I know, but we are, you know, we're the ones who, you know, advocated for it, and we probably should have ensured that we followed through or followed up on that. So, and I know we will have those discussions. But when we see that line item, I just want to make sure everybody knows that it is, that's what it, that was what it was destined for. Now, I do agree, I completely understand your objective point of view because our hesitancy to utilize it in the operational side, that federally connected money, is a subjective opinion, right? Objectively, the state has done exactly what we have asked them to do along the way, is to give boards choice, right? Give us the opportunity to be locally controlled and let us do what we want to do instead of putting us into a box one way or another. So I think it's worth continuing to have that discussion going forward. Certainly, you know, the board needs to come to some conclusion on that as well. But I do see your side of the, coming in from an objective financial point of view and from a CFO standpoint, absolutely. That's what the state intended when they gave it to us. And we need to make those decisions because sooner or later, you know, we have to have that discussion and figure out how we're going to use it, whether it's a yearly decision or whether there's apportionment of it. I think that that money each year is broken into two pieces, isn't it? Wasn't...
It's calculated under two pieces.
Right.
It's actually, the appropriation itself is not broken into two pieces. They calculate a portion on it based on number of students from, and they use the data from the federally impacted survey. And then the bigger portion of it is based on .748 discretionary calculation to determine what share, to come up with the combined share. The language does actually say it's for the use of educating students. And I know what we intended to do, it's kind of like, I guess, in my perspective as your CFO, and the board, they go out and do something different than we want, and it's what we're able to do. So it is, my recommendation as your CFO, financial advisor, is that it's available for us to take care of our needs, of which we have quite a bit in the operating fund as well as the capital, but it's certainly a board decision.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much, Penny.
I may follow up on that.
Mr. Ziegler, just one second, and I'll come back to you. For the knowledge of the board members that were not necessarily here during the process and maybe haven't looked at that statute or that allocation, specifically the language, could you send that out to all of the board members?
Absolutely.
And could you also, Ms. Urker, please make sure that Ms. Enval gets a copy of that so that she can kind of give us a legal review of the interpretation, I guess, of that statutory language? That would be great. Thank you, Mr. Ziegler.
Mr. Craig, like you, I was very surprised, especially since I've had conversations with staff about capital challenges for things that were very important like security and kept pointing them to the fact that we had this capital money. So I was really surprised that it didn't get allocated for those things. Maybe that falls on the board for not clarifying how we wish the money to be used. That being said, and having previously given direction to the superintendent to bring recommendations for the utilization of that money, I would suggest to board members that if you have any thoughts on how that money should be used, we should get our thoughts to Dr. Blackburn as soon as possible for him to include in his recommendation. So if you have any capital projects, school-based, anything maybe relative to military students, that geographic area where we serve a lot of military families, anything of that nature, I suggest that you give suggestions to Dr. Blackburn in short order so that we have input on how that money is used.
Any additional discussion on this portion of the presentation? Questions, comments?
Very good.
All right, Ms. Urker, I think you are cleared to move on to capital.
So our capital projects budgets made up of our public education capital outlay, which I'm pleased to say we got $189,000 more this year than we did last year. Our capital outlay debt service, which comes from the state, is mainly provided to us to help pay for the state Board of Education bonds. That's flat year-over-year. Ad Valorem, we're seeing about $2.5 million increase, and that's a result of the change in the property values. Sales surtax, based on the way revenues have been running, we expect that to be up about $400,000, and impact fees to remain flat at 7.5. Total revenues increased by 1.5, and the reason it does, the math may not feel like it adds, is because we've taken that $2 million that was normally going into capital and removed it because the recommendation currently is to use it in the operating fund. Our expenditures at this point are planned to be at about $130 million based on our last capital outlay plan. We are in the process of a new capital allocation process and developing the revised plan that we're required to do every year. And so how that money gets split out will come out of that allocation process. Moving on to debt service. Our debt service revenues, SVE COBE, this is also from the state, $787,000. That's about flat. That's paying our SVE bonds. Our investment income of $144,000, this is what we earned for our sinking fund for the Qualified Zone Academy Bonds that we got into back in 2004. They're coming up due pretty soon. We put in the funding for that over the first five years, and now we're just earning interest to bring that up to the amount we'll pay when it comes due. And then our transfers in from the capital projects from our ad Valorem tax will be $35,359,000 this year, giving us total revenues into the debt service fund of $36,000,003. Our debt service payments are actually down this year by $221,000. We're at $36,146,756. And then you see the out of the interest, that's an expenditure into the sinking fund reserve.
Ms. Urker, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
On the capital projects budget, our transfer out is $46.7 million. And then our transfer into debt service budget is $35.3.
Correct.
What is, where is the additional transfer out?
Into the general fund. By, we're not allowed to spend things that would get used with a function other than facilities acquisition and construction within the capital projects. So we're buying FF and EE and different capital items we're allowed to buy with the funds that go under those functions. We must transfer it to the general fund and record the expense in there. We also have our chargebacks for what maintenance that we pay out of there and some of the other things that I... other things that actually get paid out of the general fund.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And for clarification, just because I know this comes up in the community, for those who are not happy about the fact that we have debt, which occurred even, thank God, long before me, but we have to manage. Our debt payments used to be a lot higher, but through refinancing of some of the COPs, we've been able to reduce it. There is always the suggestion by some out there that we eliminate that debt as soon as possible. But clarifying that there is no acceleration options on those COP refinances, so we cannot accelerate the elimination of the debt beyond the scheduled payments.
That is correct. The bonds have a call period where you can actually do it. It's 10 years typically, all of our bond issues, except one we just refinanced, a small portion, our 10-year callables. So at the 10-year mark, if you have the full money, you can pay them off and get rid of them. Most school districts don't, haven't had for many years because of the loss of capital outlay funding. So typically, we refinance, as we did this year with the 2007 A&amp;B, which became the 2017 A&amp;B. The refinancing is done for a couple of different reasons. We may restructure the debt, which is what happened to lower the payment. We spread it out a few years ago so that we have a flat $36 to $38 million payment every year till the last three years of the debt, which is about until, I think it's like 2025. Or you do it to reduce your interest and fees and some principal payment. And that's what we did with the refinancing this year that was available to us. We reduced, have savings over the life of those bonds of about $10.6 million, which will then allow more capital to go towards capital versus the debt. We did take a small portion of that, and we were able to get it at a five-year call, which will take us to about 2023. And at the same time, we do have another issue that would be available to refinance or pay off at that time if we had the funds. But I would, unless we get a windfall somewhere from the legislature, I don't foresee that happening.
Agreed. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Last, we'll look at the special revenues budget. These are our grants and National Lunch Program. And from our federal sources, we're expecting almost $69 million. That's a mixture, it's 24 million of that is the National Lunch Program, 64 million is our federal and, federal through state grants. State sources is food service, about $400,000, and then our local sources are also food service at $9.6 million. And then our expenditures, based on the grant, are split, as you see here, across the functions, with the majority of it at $35 million, the biggest portion being for our food service Now, our next step is to finalize the tentative budget. Our tentative budget hearing is July 27th, so over the next couple of weeks, we'll be trying to finalize what we're going to have in the budget for you and our recommendation of funding priorities. We will be presenting, well, you already approved it today, the request to advertise. We have to advertise on the 22nd. Monday, we are expecting to receive the certification, our second calculation of the FEFP program. And then from there was where we'll finish our tentative budget, because we'll have to make any adjustments there. Trim advertisement will show up in the paper on July 22nd, and that is a mandated how we have to do it, no choices, Department of Revenue Language. And we'll hold our first public hearing to adopt the tentative budget millage on July 27th at 5:30. As I said earlier, this will be a little different process. We will go through the standard process, but we want to have further discussion about the funding of the priorities, and where the board would like us to take the budget towards the final hearing in September. So from that, we'll go back and we'll take that input and adjust the budget. And then our second, final public hearing is Thursday, September 7th at 5:30 PM in the boardroom, where we will ask you to approve the budget millage. Any further questions that I can answer?
And I believe the recommendation for the millage is no change, no increase, correct?
The millage does not increase. The overall millage, the sum of the three actually goes down slightly. However, we are advertising an increase, which is driven by the property values, mainly due to the increase in revenues of the discretionary millage and the capital because the property values went up. But the overall total millage is going down.
So millage goes down, revenue goes up, and it's a tax increase. Lovely.
That's according to the Truth in Millage Act, yes.
Love it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Irker. Any additional comments from board members? All right. Dr. Mullins, I think it's back to you, if you have a superintendent's report.
No additional report at this time.
All right. There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.